Good evening. It's now 5:06 PM. The regular session of the Planning Commission for the City of Lancaster will please now come to order. Tonight, Commissioner Burden will offer the invocation, and the pledge will be led by Commissioner Derryberry. Please stand.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Thank you for this opportunity to come together in service of our great city. I ask that you cover the entire city of Lancaster and all its residents. I ask that you bless all the staff in the city. I ask that you bless our commissioners who are absent today. I pray that they are blessed and protected. In Jesus' name, amen.
Face the flag. Be with me.
The flag of the United States of America. The republic which stands on nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recording Secretary, may we have the roll call, please?
Chairman Voss is absent. Chairperson Harvey?
Present.
Commissioner Burden?
Present.
Commissioner Derryberry?
Present.
Commissioner Moore and Commissioner Tufts are both absent. Commissioner Underwood?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Public business from the floor. Any person who would like to address the Planning Commission on any agendized item is requested to complete a speaker card for the recording secretary and identify the agenda item you would like to discuss. Each person will be given an opportunity to address the Planning Commission at the time such item is discussed by the Planning Commission. Speaker cards available at the rear of the council chamber. Individual speaker cards, excuse me, individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. Individual comments are limited to three minutes each unless a different time limit has been announced. Do we have any speakers?
There are no speakers.
Okay. Our first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of March 20th, 2023. May we have a motion, please?
I'll move that we approve the meeting minutes from March 20th, 2023.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Please vote. Motion passes, four zero. The first item is under the new public hearing is conditional use permit number 22-15. Ms. Swain?
Vice Chair Harvey and members of the commission, before you tonight is a conditional use permit for the construction and operation of a 3,596 square foot Quick Quack Car Wash. The proposed project would be located at the southeast corner of 20th Street West and Avenue I, just east of the existing gas station. The car wash building, the car wash building would contain the car wash tunnel, office, employee lounge, and restrooms. Three car wash prep lanes would be located along the eastern side of the building, which would feed into one lane through the car wash. Upon exiting the car wash, 14 vacuum stalls would be located on the west side of the building for use by car wash customers. The mechanical equipment associated with the vacuums would be located within block wall enclosures. A block wall would be located along the eastern and southern boundaries of the project site to ensure adequate screening from the existing and under-construction residential uses. Access to the site would be from driveways located on Avenue I and 20th Street West. The 20th Street West driveway would be right in and right out only, and the car wash would operate from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, seven days a week. As you can see from the elevations, the building is a mix of a cream color, light and dark gray with yellow and green accents and signage along the towers. The signage and the colors are consistent with the city's design guidelines. Staff is recommending that the commission adopt Resolution Number 2308 approving the proposed Quick Quack Car Wash. I'm available to answer any questions, and the applicant is also in the audience and available to answer questions.
Any of the commissioners have any questions? Okay, so the applicant's here?
The applicant is here.
Green here? Do I push green or is it on? It's on, thank you, sorry. My name is Vance Shannon. I represent Quick Quack very proudly. We were developed in 2004. Two of the founding members operated the store. And, long story really short, 20 years later, we have 190 stores. We have 900,000 members. The majority of our, of our customers are members. We glean about 4,700 members on average per new store that we open. Just some really important things to talk about is water conservation. I know we've had tons and tons of water lately, but it doesn't mean we should waste it. And we recycle and reclaim all of our water and continue to recycle it so that we use much less than you would normally. We've done a sound study in this particular situation to ensure that we meet the thresholds of sound. And then really, I think that we've probably all seen the, whether it's school, whether it's Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, cheerleaders, whatever, and they do the fundraising through a car wash. We do that on a bigger scale. We wash cars to change lives for better. And that's what we really are about, contributing to the community and just in general. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
You actually answered closely one of the questions that I did have. Maybe at the 50,000-foot level, if you could explain when you discuss water and how you're capturing runoff, just a little bit so that the public's aware and maybe the commission's aware just how that's collected. Because I know that this is, you have another Quick Quack in town, and I believe it came maybe about 10 months ago to the City Commission. So I do recall meeting you, Mr. Shannon. So if you can just give us at the 50,000-foot level as far as the water, how it's reclaimed.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. So the water comes in from the city and it goes through three 4,500, excuse me, three 1,500-gallon tanks that are filtration systems. The oils and the contaminants, of course, raised to the surface and so forth, and it's a filtration system. Some of the water is taken right off the front to go through a deionization process. That portion of the water is used at the final rinse. But all of the water goes into a trench in the center of the wash and brought back in through those three 1,500-gallon tanks over and over and over again. So that's essentially how it's done, is through these three tanks and the circulation from the car wash into the trench back through the system. The water that drips off the car is about the only bit of water we don't recycle or refurbish, like refurbish, reclaim.
All right, thank you. That does answer the question that I did have. Any other questions?
If you know, what is your annual water usage?
You know, what I can tell you is we use about 30 gallons a car. It, it just depends on the volume of a store to be able to tell you how, how much a particular store might use. But when you compare that to washing your car in the driveway, you'll use up to 80, 100 gallons of water. And the biggest difference isn't really in the water savings, but it's in where that water goes. So when you wash your car in your driveway, all of the water detergents, whatever they might be, will go into the stormwater system. When you wash it in the car wash, it all goes into the sewer system. And everything that we use for, for detergents and so forth is biodegradable and environmentally friendly.
You made a comment that you did a sound study. Just curious, it's, I had the opportunity to drive by. My kids go to school down here near the boulevard. I drive down the site every day. I'm glad to see it developed. But it's pretty close to some of the houses. So if you could share, what do you mean by the sound study or the performance you made?
Sure, sure. And I do agree with you. I think it's going to make a nice addition to that, to that corner. It's a great-looking building. The sound studies are done based on the ordinance or they're looking at the ordinance to ensure that we don't exceed any kind of sound levels and sound emissions that are allowable. And we put sensors in all of the, the sensitive receptor areas that will be able to, it's, it's digitally done, but it can tell them exactly how much sound would be traveling at certain distances. The, the homes are quite a distance away, and there'll be more development between us and the homes. And there's also a wall that we're building that's not even part of the sound study. So it will make a difference also.
And what are the hours of operation again?
7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Yes, ma'am. Hi.
Can you turn your microphone on for us, please? Thank you.
I did hear you.
Okay. So anyhow, I'm very interested in this because I go to In-N-Out a lot of times. And so I'm, I'm wondering about the traffic pattern here. So on this diagram, okay, is there going to be the, the in, the in from 20th Street West and then out to 20th Street West?
I think you can go both in and out of both 20th Street West and on to Avenue I. Am I correcting that? Am I looking at that right?
No, you're looking at it correctly. So they can come in off of 20th here or they can come in off of Avenue I. And they're going to come in, and then there's three lanes for them to stack. And then those lanes will feed into the car wash tunnel coming in through here. And they can either leave out to Avenue I or leave out to 20th. They did provide us with their, their average number of cars through based on an hour, hourly basis. And that was provided to our traffic engineer. And we did look at this to ensure that there was sufficient stacking distance for their cars. They, they have also said they have the ability to block off lanes shut down for a little bit if they, if they get too backed up, which is not likely. The other thing, where was I with that? Yeah, so there, there should be sufficient stacking distance, and there are conditions of approval in there that require them to address anything that starts to affect the public right of way. And I don't know if you want to add about how quickly cars go through?
I would. I, I would like to add to that. Thank you very much, Jocelyn. Unfortunately, or fortunately, we don't get the volume of customers that In-N-Out worker does. We would love to, but we just don't. It's funny, I was assisted a hearing the other night, and they were talking about, if you want an In-N-Out worker, you're going to deal with lines. That was the commission. So some things that make our queuing really efficient is there's really no order taking, like you might at a quick serve restaurant. Like I said, about 80% of our customers are members. We have a license plate reader in each of the lanes. When a member comes in, the license plate reader sees their license plate and opens the gate, and they just go through the wash. It's about two minutes and 30-some seconds through the wash itself. And we can actually load a car about every 25 seconds on to the, the, the wash itself. And then it's a conveyor as it pulls you through the wash. There's no delay. Only people that are paying, customers, would stop at the, what we call quarterback station to pay. But it's almost like a freeway light where you have the carpool lane just going by, and then every once in a while, someone who's paying will, will feed into that line. It works very efficiently.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions from the commission? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Thanks for listening.
With no further items to discuss, we'll close the public hearing and consider a motion.
I'll move that we adopt Resolution Number 23-08 approving CP 22-15 for the construction and operation of a 3,596-square-foot Quick Quack Car Wash in the CPD zone located in the southeast corner of 20th Street West and Avenue Y.
I second.
Anything further? Please vote. Motion passes, four zero.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
The second item on our agenda for new business, tentative track map number 83315. Ms. Campagna?
Good evening, Vice Chair Harvey and members of the Planning Commission. This item before you is tentative track map 83315. The proposed project is located at the southeast corner of 30th Street West and Newton Street. The subdivision is for 103 single-family lots in the R7,000 zone. The lots range from 7,002 square feet to 12,095 square feet. The proposed project is consistent with the general plan, housing element, and the Lancaster Municipal Code. With that, staff recommends that Planning Commission adopt Resolution 2310 approving TTM 83315 to allow for the subdivision of 103 single-family residential lots and adopting a mitigated negative declaration. That concludes staff's presentation. Staff and the applicant are here for any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any speakers for this item?
No speakers on this item.
Any questions from the commission? If there's nothing further to discuss on this one, then we'll close the public hearing and consider a motion, please.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 23-10 approving TTM Number 83315 and adopting a mitigated negative declaration.
I'll second.
Please vote. Motion passes, four zero. All right, our third item under public, new public business, Ms. De La Cruz?
Yes, thank you. The third item, which is the extension to TTM 74965 and CP 21-03, will be continued to the May Planning Commission agenda. We have, we do not have sufficient quorum for that item as Vice Chair Harvey would need to recuse on that matter. Therefore, we are moving the item to the next meeting, to the regular May meeting on May 15th. So you don't need to hear that item. Thank you.
All right. In that case, do we have any announcements?
We wanted to share a little bit about what's been happening in our world in City Hall besides all of the wonderful work that the staff is doing. We just completed a reorganization of the Development Services Department. So I think I mentioned a few months back that Jeff Hogan, who was the director for Development Services, was retiring and stepping down, and he has officially done so. And that resulted in the reorganization of the department. The department was split into two new departments, one being Community Development and the other being Public Works. So I'm personally excited to say I was chosen to be the director of Community Development. So here I am. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. The Community Development Department is now a true community development department with three new divisions as part of that, which include planning and permitting, which is also building and safety as part of that division. There are the Economic Development and Housing Divisions as part of that. And there's a new division that is the Beautification and Special Districts Division that will focus on beautification throughout the city and improving our LMDs and overall landscaping throughout the city. We'll be working closely with parks and public works and making sure that happens. On the public work side, there's also three new divisions there, a total of three divisions with Utilities, which was always part of Public Works, and that stays in Public Works. The second division is, oh, I forget what they call it, but it's all of the public works pieces with all of the street pavement and all of the boots on the ground, folks that are out in the field and making sure our streets are repaired. And the last group is the City Engineering Group, which is inclusive of all of the engineering components, traffic engineering, development engineering. The two gentlemen that are sitting with us here this evening are part of that group. So they are now under that section. So a lot going on with that, with the splitting of the two departments or the creation of the two new departments, I should say. But it's been great, and I am still here. I'm still available to you all. We won't ruffle those feathers, and we'll still be here for you and make sure that all of the items associated with planning and, and the permitting process remain the same. So I'm excited to share that. And other than that, we just are still very busy. The agendas are still pretty full. No cancellation of any meetings in the, in the near future at all. But summaries are on the corner. Some folks go on vacation. And just a reminder that if you do plan on being out, to let us know so that we can plan accordingly. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. Now we'll go into public business from the floor. This portion of the agenda allows an individual the opportunity to address the commission on any subject regarding city business. Under state legislation, no action can be taken on non-agenda items. Members of the public should be aware of this when addressing the Planning Commission regarding items not specifically referenced on the agenda. Please complete a speaker card for the recording secretary. Speaker cards are available at the rear of the council chamber. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. Individual comments limited to three minutes each unless a different time is announced. Do we have any speakers on?
No speakers.
Okay. Something just seemed way too fast about this meeting. This might be a record. Maybe a record for me because I didn't talk as much as I normally do. Well, with that, we stand adjourned to the special meeting on May 8th, 2023 at 5:00 PM right here in the Lancaster City Hall. right here in the Lancaster City Hall Council Chambers. Thank you all.